Okay. Seven o'clock, and I call the October 19th meeting of the Planning and Transportation Commission of the City of Los Altos to order. For the record, please note that Commissioners McTye and Meadows are not here. Ty may come late, but I know Commissioner Meadows is out of town. The quorum, we have one request to speak for an item that is not on the agenda from Jeremy McAluso.
Hi. A few weeks ago, City Council mentioned that I gave instruction to start looking into increasing density in Los Altos and responding to the large package of housing bills that the state just passed. And I'm disappointed to see nothing about that on the agenda. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. If anybody has an electronic device, please turn it off. Forgot to say that. We have a fun start for the meeting tonight. We have the special presentation from the Public Art Commissioner.
Okay. So, I'm Maddie McBurney. I'm on the Public Arts Commission. This is Monica, and she and I are going to just do about a 10-minute PowerPoint for you. We are working currently on our Public Art Master Plan, which should go in front of City Council in November. I brought a copy over there, and I also have the website link if you want to go read it. It's a lot of pages.
Excuse me, let me comment that Commissioner McTye is now in attendance as well.
You might. All right, so we'll just get started. So, public art and placemaking, next. Placemaking, what is it? It's using the arts to develop an area where people want to live, work, and congregate. So often, public art can create that synergy. It can also create a community brand. So this is Tressel Trail Bridge in Iowa, and this is how it looks at night. But it's a beautiful, mathematical, wonderful piece of public art. Shapes the quality of life and spirit. So this is called Spoon Ridge and Cherry by Claus Oldenburg. He was a famous sculpture artist in his 60s. He and his wife designed this in an 11-acre park in Minneapolis. It's basically a cherry on a spoon, and it spouts water out of the stem. This is a piece by a British—well, he's a British artist, but he's Indian. His name is Anish Kapoor, and it's called The Cloud Gate. It's located in Chicago. We kind of feel like—we'd like to see Los Altos have a big identity piece that would be a real eye-catcher for people to come and visit. This reflects the city, the people who stand under it. It's a fantastic piece of public art. If you've not seen it, it's stainless steel. It's beautiful in the day as well as the night. It's in a plaza. This is the Harts Project in San Francisco. I'm sure you've been there and seen these. This was a fundraiser that benefited San Francisco General Hospital, started in 2004. They solicited artists to do 131 hearts, and then they were displayed around the city for three months. Then they were auctioned off to businesses and individuals, so it was super-successful, and now it is held annually. Sometimes they're smaller versions, but it's a great public art community project. We are thinking maybe Los Altos could do something like Apricot or have some cool project. This artist, Janet Ekelmann, she's world-renowned. She creates these aerial net sculptures. This is a piece that is all made out of netting. She went and lived in India and learned how to make fishnets with the fishermen, and then brought those concepts back to create these public art pieces. So in the daytime, it's just white rope. And it was commissioned by the City of Phoenix. It's located in a plaza as well, in a park. People just hang out and lie down underneath it. It's just a really cool piece. It enriches community experience. This is called Bus Home by Dennis Oppenheim. It's a shelter for—you can see down at the bottom, there are—it's a bus stop, basically. And his idea is that you get on your train, you go on the road up and down and around, and you always end up coming back home. So you'll always arrive home after your journey. We're working on our downtown visionings, so we hope to create a sense of place and identity for Los Altos. These kinds of projects can bring economic vitality. Movie directors are drawn to places like this where they can put these in their backdrops for movies. It's an awesome piece. Public art creates economic vitality. This is a piece that's made with recycled plastic lids, so it can also become an environmental wall piece to just decorate a wall. Since we have many benches, I'm going to show you a few benches that are unique and wonderful. It's a mosaic bench, just painted pattern on a bench. Also fencing. So anytime a park requires fencing, this is a fence. As you can see in the background, there's a pool. And if we're thinking about a dog park, maybe that fencing could be included. But anytime we have fencing or existing fencing, it can be beautiful and creative and aesthetic. Next. Things that are iconic and lit up at night. This was on Treasure Island. This was a temporary art piece. So sometimes temporary art pieces can be just as beautiful, and they don't remain forever, but they create vibrant street. This is a piece that brings people out at night to enjoy space. Or can be a piece of art that is put in front of kind of a dull building, but creates color and life at night. This is a children's hospital where the artist created public art on the exterior. There's a sculpture. Then behind the sculpture on the wall is painted a mural, and then inside the hospital, the umbrella theme is carried on as well in three-dimensional form. So whenever buildings are made, it'd be great if public art could be included inside and out. You can go see this in Palo Alto. It's called Brilliant. It's located between their art center and the library. This is how it looks at night. In the daytime, it's mostly like the silver piece on the right, but the sun still reflects through it and creates these awesome patterns. What's on there are words, so it's beautiful how it connects art with the library.
And the colors change during the night as well.
Yeah, and you can go touch a button and change them yourself as well. The Pool by Jen Lewin is a mobile piece of artwork. She has people buy these or rent these. They're laid down in these patterns, and the community would step on them, and that's what makes them light up and change colors. And she's done this again all over the world. So since we have so many trees in our town, we thought we'd show this one. In Germany, they do a light—they do all kinds of light projection, but this one is—I thought it was cool how it makes the trees look like fall, and then they can make it look like winter. Different times of year, it can create this wonderful piece of color. This is made by Gabriel Kemelin. She does temporary light show. She plans her art pieces and projects them onto nature with a slide projector. And then, under an archway, another projected light could be under a tunnel. A vehicle light projection under a tunnel. In San Francisco, Future City Lab did this piece called Light Swarm, and it's activated by noise. So you go by, and the lights will change. People will watch them change, make noise, interact with it. These are the same people who did the Bay Bridge, the lighting on the Bay Bridge that changes light. This was a temporary exhibit as well at the Yerba Blena Gardens. Community art projects. So, community art projects bring communities together. Children making chalk. This is a giant table and chairs, big Clifford the Dog over there. So it's fun to do community art projects. We recently did one in—well, actually not recent anymore. It was last spring for a conversation piece. We brought Jenny Wischnack's fourth graders. She's in the first slide on the left in the blue shirt. They taught the adults how to do origami and make the origami cranes. Children were teaching their parents, their grandparents. A young boy was speaking Russian with his mom. It was really fun. It was a very successful and fun project. Another neighborhood art project are the Mosaic Stairs. This is in San Francisco, but neighborhoods can come together, create art for their parks in their community. This is another community art project where the people made panels. So if you see this boy, in front of him, there's a panel, and then all the panels were put together by these two women that did the project. So it's always nice to have a leader who makes the design, but then the community actually makes the piece. This is a piece called Open House in York, Alabama. The National Endowment for the Arts gave Matthew Mazzola money and the community money to create this public art piece. So he took some old dilapidated houses, and then he put together this piece, and as you open it up, it becomes a public art piece. They wanted a piece where they could play music, have entertainment, and enjoy themselves. And so he—when you open it up, it becomes this place where they can project movies, or they can have music, and have outdoor space for music. Sorry, I'm going too fast for David. Okay, so anyway, here they are enjoying their space. He's—I've gone to the Public Art Convention. He's an amazing guy. He does—he goes to your community, he talks to the community for weeks, and then he builds a specific project for your community, and he's really—everything he does is different. Data strongly indicates that cities with an active, dynamic culture are more attractive to individuals and businesses. Our benefits is our community. It engages, creates civic dialogue, as you know, and it connects artists that are in our community and maybe beyond our community, and also the appreciation for art. Chrysalis Launcher is a project that's a gateway project, and this was an artist in—where is she—in Florida. It's made of aluminum. She did these gateways. This is a place that was, of course, run down, and they wanted—artists had studios there. They wanted people to come visit, so she created these gateways. And then along the fence posts, the motif is there with the gateway. And we were thinking, San Antonio, wouldn't that be cool if we could have a gateway, and then all the posts along the way could connect us to downtown? So anytime there's crosswalk improvements, curb improvements, it'd be great to include public art. San Francisco, they did neighborhood competition for design, and each neighborhood chose their own. Castro had, of course, their rainbow design. Children, when they're crossing to school, it just is more attractive and fun. This is a speed bump that just kind of creates more interest and color and life, and of course, just a fun, attractive one. This is in Koreatown in Los Angeles, and it's done with stencils, and it's a very creative piece.
And I'll mention the City of Palo Alto has a call for artists right now. I think they just closed it for a crosswalk.
Crosswalk design. Yeah, so that's the other thing that's cool, is a call for art. But I'm trying to show you guys these things, too, because you're in planning, so you can, like, get this into the planning stage of things. This is also an upcycled bench. If you notice, this is on University Avenue in Palo Alto. This artist is Colin Selig. He leased these benches to the City of Palo Alto. They have a Kickstarter program right now, trying to raise money to keep them because they've been very well-received. Next slide. So this—he uses recycled propane tanks to create these benches. Next slide. And they're all—you can go there now. They're just really, really beautiful. Okay, next slide. So, technology and public art. These are solar-powered Wi-Fi stations. They're designed by Toyota, but they'd be kind of cool to have around town. Maybe not exactly like this, but technology is another way that we can incorporate art. Next slide. This is interactive chalkboard, so there's—this would be a temporary piece that people could interact with. Before I die, I want to, and then they fill in the spaces. And then you get people talking about it and walking by and interacting with it. Wall mural paintings can be, of course, a community art project, or it can be just a complete artist-designed project as well. Next slide. Interactive chalk art. It's temporary, but it's put on the ground where children can interact with it. I think I already showed this slide. So moving into the future, what's coming up? As I told you, we're doing a city-wide master art plan. We hope that we can get a percent for art, so we can have commissioned public art pieces. If we have a master plan, it's easier to get grants and work on public-private partnerships. And Archimedes' Ghost, the most controversial piece, kind of eerie at night, but a fun piece for people to talk about. Some things we want to do are maps. We want to do some maps for locating and bike tours for where the public art is. More—we just need money, basically, for all these fun things. And we'd like to have a city staff person dedicated to public art because we're finding that we work really hard, but it's nice if that person is in the city, you know, advocating for public art, too. That's kind of a lot of what I already said, but I wanted to show you the bike racks, because, you know, we did the artistic bike racks, which were very successful, community-driven design. These were all designed by N1. These are the designs that won two years ago, and last year's will be up pretty soon, coming up pretty soon. And so that's pretty much it. And I hope—I know I took probably more than 10 minutes, but I hope that you enjoyed it and that you'll think about public art when project's going to be for you.
Any questions for Maddie? No, thank you very much. Wait, wait, come back.
I'm just curious sort of what your budget is, how you keep it. I mean, do you—are you buying stuff? Are they on loan?
Oh, we don't have a budget. We don't have a budget. We're just advisors.
Okay.
But the sculptures that we have around town mostly are on loan for two years. Sometimes the artist will do a five-year loan. It just depends. But most of what you see, unless it was donated or someone came together to buy a piece, then it's permanent. So there are some permanent pieces.
And what about, like, the bike racks? Don't you have to have it constructed?
We do have a budget. We have, like, a $10,000-a-year budget, which seems to never change. And from that, we have to pay for the bike racks. We pay for—when we do the loan project, the artist gets a $1,000 grant, which they use that money. They have to self-insure the piece of artwork, and they also have to transport it here and back. So some of them come from places where it takes days to bring the artwork, so it's probably not a money-making experience for them.
I thought a couple of years back, we talked about, like, a percentage.
We did, but it got kind of stopped because of Oakland, because the City of Oakland—I don't know if you knew what happened there.
No. Did we stop it, or did it get stopped?
The City Council.
City Council.
Yeah, no, you guys passed it through. The City of Oakland had some lawsuit happen to them with their public art master plan, and it was the way they wrote it. But it was a state—that—I mean, sorry, it was a federal lawsuit, and our state was still intact, but our City Council was advised to take caution, so they kind of stopped it. But it's going to be in our master plan, so.
So it may come back?
Yeah.
I'd love to see it.
It will come back because the percent is really key for.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Pressing.
Got it. Well, I think you're doing a great job.
Thanks.
And I think when people are talking about the art, because it's controversial, that means you're doing an even better job than.
Yeah.
And I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
When we talked about First and San Antonio and the piece of art that they put on the corner, I'm curious, does the Art Commission get involved with whatever they're going to do, or do they just—the builder decides, "I want this," and we see it? And I know we made that recommendation.
It's not—it's in the master plan now.
But there's no policy or.
Not yet.
Process for involving.
First and San Antonio.
Way in and provide feedback or recommendations on the piece of art.
We approved it in the plans.
I know, we approved it, but I was curious if the Art Commission ever gets involved in the conversation, because it is a piece of art.
Yeah, doesn't sound like they do, no.
Yeah, okay.
We will in the future. We hope. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next item on today's agenda is the consent calendar, which is the Commission Minutes. It was a very interesting and detailed meeting. The floor is open for comments.
I didn't see anything in the minutes that wasn't accurately reflected.
I just want to make sure if everyone else is okay.
I don't remember.
I don't specifically remember, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen, that Mr. Bunker provided an appraisal. I don't think we were given an appraisal.
He did.
I think he mentioned it, but I don't think we were given—were we given a document?
I thought he passed out papers.
There was a document that he gave to me.
He gave us—okay.
He distributed a.
A document. I don't think we looked at it, but.
Yeah, not much time to look at it.
Yeah, because I went looking for something, and somehow I didn't end up with one, and I thought, never mind.
All right.
In that case, I will move to up the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose none, six zero.
Abstain.
Alex is abstaining. So five, five four one, five.
Oh, one.
Oh, one. Too much baseball for you. The next item is the informational item on the Hillview Community Center. No, that's the minutes. Excuse me? Back to the agenda. We've already been there, thank goodness. So the next one is a public hearing on a use permit for the first-floor space at 400 Main. And Jeff, did you have a statement you wanted to make? Oh, and anybody wants to speak on it?
Is a staff report first?
Just a minute, one at a time. All right, so first of all, there's someone who wants to speak. Can we have a staff report, and then Jeff, you get to speak. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Chair Bresson, members of the Commission. Just a brief staff report for you this evening. This is a use permit application for an office use at 400 Main. Back in August, we brought forward to you an interpretation that since this site had not been leased or rented since the time of the completion of the project, that it opened an opportunity for the Commission to consider uses other than retail and restaurant in this space. And in August, you approved a use permit in application after you kind of concurred with staff's interpretation and said that a barber shop or a hair salon could go in this space, a cocktail lounge or wine bar, a fitness studio. But you left open the option for opportunity, I should say, for a optional use to come before you with a consideration of a use permit. So that's why we have the use permit before you this evening. It is for an office use. It's an office that's within the existing building, and the applicant or property owner is requesting approval of the use permit.
Questions for staff?
I had a question, yeah. So just because I don't know the process for a use permit, is it a one-time grant, or is it permanent? In other words, if we say—if it's an office space that it's okay to use, then is it with each business that goes in there? We have to re-approve it, or is it granted forever?
Well, the use permit for an office use can run with the land unless you, as a Commission, decide that this particular use permit runs for this particular business, and then that would become a condition of approval. So you could limit that use permit.
And so are we saying this is can be office space regardless of who the tenant is? Because I know who the tenant is, and I know that there's a lot of good positive feedback for having them in there, but I also wanted to think, does it really matter?
We've labeled it as an administrative office, so I think as we've recommended approval of it right now, if this business were to go out of this space and a similar office, administrative office use were to come into the space, we would say okay to that. If it were something different along the lines of a—maybe a medical office or a dental office, then we'd say that would be a different type of use under this use permit, and you'd have to—they would have to come back before the Commission in that instance. But again, you do have the option of saying this is a use permit for this particular business.
Is medical or dental considered office in our code? I mean, in other words, is there anything other than administrative office in the definition of office?
Well, our code is interesting because it has a medical-dental office, but then it also has a medical-dental clinic. And I'm not quite sure what the distinction is, other than to say, I think with the clinic, there's a broader range of procedures that they could conduct within the leased space.
I think it was a parking issue at one point when we were talking about differentiating medical and dental offices from office unspecified.
Got it.
And that was—go ahead. I have one more question.
And in some of the downtown zones, it's specifically prohibited to have that type of use on, as I recall, State and Main. Specifically says you can't have the medical-type use on State and Main. I think if you read the CRS zone.
So I have a question, because I wasn't at the August meeting, and I don't know if this got discussed, which is parking. Is the new use of this space, because it's not retail, does it meet the parking requirement still?
My understanding is that the onsite parking provided was provided at the retail parking requirement, which is one space per—oh, one space per 200 square feet or five spaces per 1,000. And the office use per the code is one space per 300 square feet or roughly three. So it's less per 1,000, so a less.
I would really like to have seen something about parking in the staff report. I think it's a sensitive enough issue for all of us that—even though it's not—it's got a good reason for not being problematic, I think it should have been commented on.
Yeah. Maybe with the City Council, you might want to.
Well, unless this is appealed, it won't go under the City Council.
Okay.
So, and looking—I went back to the Downtown Design Guidelines. Phoebe, by the way, I see that you were on this.
I was.
2009.
I've been here forever.
And we have, like, this T-shaped for the CRS zone, right? And I'm trying to understand, what's the perimeter of the top of the T on First Street? So Main Street, State Street, you know, the H, basically, in the center of our core is all CRS zone. And then we have this, like, long top on Main—sorry, on First Street.
Yeah.
On First Street that is designated on both sides, but in fact, on this side, on the west side of this street, it actually goes a little further, sort of like a T. So what's the ends? Where are the ends of that?
The ends on—sort of towards the south or towards—as First Street approaches San Antonio, the end of the CRS Zone District is about at Whitney Street. The Drager's. Drager's grocery store's at.
I was going to say, it's between the grocery stores, right?
Right.
Drager's on one side and Safeway on the other.
Safeway on the other, correct.
Looks like it goes beyond Safeway now. Safeway's at State.
It's past State.
And it's a few buildings down. It almost goes to the next street.
So the passerel building?
Probably. Okay.
I need to have this map here for you. You might want to take a look at the map.
Yeah, exactly. So how long has that piece been part of the CRS? Is it—was it not part of the CRS zone before the 2009?
I believe it was part of the CRS zone at that time.
Yes, it's Safeway. I think so, too. I don't think so.
You think it was added to the CRS zone?
I think it was added to the CRS zone.
It was added, but it was added right around the time.
It was added in either 2009 or 2010.
Yeah, right about that same time.
So it was added before this building was proposed, or at least before this building was approved.
Did you have a question for staff about that?
I was trying to understand if it wasn't there, why it was added. What was the intention behind making this stretch part of the CRS?
My—and I'm sort of making an assumption here. I believe that the intent was to, between the two grocery stores, have a retail corridor along First Street, where you had retail and restaurant uses on both sides of the street, sort of along that T area that you mentioned.
We raised the question in the Downtown Buildings Committee about that, and when discussing it was Zach, who was representing—not David at the time, was not part of that. What he described to us was—and then I went back and read the report, the Downtown Committee in those days—which Phoebe will remember—which recommended a number of changes to zoning things downtown, was the idea that the Main and State Street retail area kind of would look funny to truncate it right at the end of the street, where you're otherwise walking up this retail street, and then you're kind of truncated, and as you get to the end, you face a completely different kind of.
Use.
Use, thank you. And so it made sense to kind of make that all holistically part of the CRS zone. That's how it was explained to us.
The concept was, we were looking for continuous retail. We were looking for a pedestrian experience that you could walk up one of either State or Main, make the turn, come back down the other, and have that continuous retail experience the entire time.
Got it. Okay, and then the other question I have is about the building. Right at the corner, there's sort of a rounded. right at the corner. There's sort of a rounded stone feature, right at, said Foothill and Main Street, Foothill and Main. And as I recall, and maybe I'm wrong, I thought there was an intention to have city identifying signage on that at one point. Where, what, were they, were we supposed to put something there and then did it not happen?
The entry wall was part of the building project and it was envisioned as part of our entry to, to the Main Street. And so it was approved with City of Los Altos in.
I remember that.
In, in the script, in the marble, black marble. And, and then it had a building address identifier in it. And the conditions of approval for the project had us hold off because we had the, the wayfinding sign program and we weren't sure how much we were going to be duplicating signs. And it left it to the discretion of staff on how to complete that.
Now, we're.
And so now that we're done with the wayfinding, that's something that's on our plate to decide whether we want to complete that element or not.
Any other questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Morris.
Jeff Morris, owner of 400 Main Street. And I want to, for my, 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 I want to just talk a little bit about the history of the ground floor retail. Jim Randolph and Ron Labatich started leasing the retail in about 2011, 2012. And we received one offer from a retail tenant and that was Pharmica. We made the deal with Pharmica for the adjacent space. Unfortunately, they decided to close their store because there was absolutely no foot traffic in that area. And they, they signed a 10-year lease and they're looking just to pay rent for the next eight years because they were losing so much money. The other space that we're talking about tonight has never been leased. We've never had an offer on it. It's just been sitting there for years. There is, at least in my experience and, there's just no retail demand. It's a very different game. When I first got the approval for the project, I thought the retail would be the first to lease right next to a brand new Safeway. It's just, the retail market's changed. It's just not there. And there's only so many restaurants you can open in town. The one I have is doing well, but not super. And it's, and just that we've had, we tried to get so many different restaurants in that space. And when the people would come to town and look at it, they would just say, no, there's not enough traffic here. So anyway, the Heising Simons Foundation is a growing family foundation based at 400 Main Street. The foundation awarded more than 54.8 million in 2016. Has on track to award a significantly greater amount this year. Since its inception, it's awarded $263 million, much of which has gone to local charities. The foundation's expanded significantly in size, in terms of size, headcount and dollars since it opened a few years ago on the second floor of the building. It's adding more jobs today, has plans for a lot more additional jobs in the future. So the increased headcount has made them run out of space. And so they're looking for expansion options. This is the most obvious one for them. And if they can't do it, then they'll end up opening an office in San Francisco and shifting some of the operations there. I have a signed lease with Heising Simons Foundation for the expansion downstairs. I'm requesting here tonight to request your approval of the use permit, which will enable them to accommodate their growth by expanding into the vacant space in the ground floor that has never been leased. The Heising Simons Foundation has several goals and works with partners to advance sustainable solutions in climate and clean energy, sciences, education, focusing on children from birth through age eight, human rights and local opportunities such as local charities here, including several large gifts to Foothill College. I want to thank you all for consideration of the use permit for the expansion of Heising Simons Foundation 400 Main Street. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I think you're off the hook.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm so surprised.
I was looking to see if anyone else had any.
I do too, but you can go first.
How long is the lease that you have signed?
Um.
What's the term?
It's a 12-year lease with a 10-year option.
One 10-year option or multiple?
That's what the current lease has right now.
And how many square feet do you have on the ground floor in its entirety? Thirty-one-hundred, I understand, is for this space, but how much?
It's about 12,000 square feet. I mean, it's 12, running it off, 12, 13.
So the thirty-one hun, that not including thirty?
That's about a quarter of it.
It's 25%. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So the, I had a question about the outdoor eating space that's underneath the structure. Is that included as part of the rent? So there's that walkway through the middle of the structure and Citrelli, Citrelli?
Citrelli, yeah.
Yeah, on the left side has sort of, looks like they've got tables and chairs out there. Is the intent that the right side will also have tables, that the, the foundation will?
No, it was originally approved that way. David Cornfield and I spent a lot of time working on the plan to have seating. And we, there's a line of demarcation.
Right.
Which defines on both sides, but with the Heising Simons use, then that outdoor dining space would not be utilized.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Morris. We have one request to speak from Ron Labatich.
Oh, actually, can I ask one more question?
Sorry, Jeff.
Jeff, can I ask you one more question? Is there any objection from, from you about signage on that, on that face facade?
You were talking to the issue that you talked about with the.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if the city determined that they wanted to put black marble, City of Los Altos entrance signage.
I need to go back and look in my files. I think the city waived its right to do that. I think I paid them some money. James, it was something I did with James Walken when he was still here. I think he, I think I paid him, I can get back to get you that information, but I, I think the city didn't want it.
The city didn't want it or you didn't want it, so you paid the city, so you didn't have to do it?
I don't, I'd have to go back and look at the history. I just remember James and I were working something out because they didn't want to do it. So then he wanted the money to put signs somewhere else. But I could be wrong on that. So I really should go back and check my notes.
Got it.
Can I, can I ask one clarifying question? I mean, based on that, Jeff, would you, if there were nothing, no agreements in the works, would be, would you be opposed to putting the signage there at the corner?
It's something I know that I'm pretty sure.
Actually, Jeff, you need to go to the microphone because people at home can't hear you.
Keep that open.
I'm happy to consider it, but I, I, for some reason, I recollect that James and I had already worked that through, but I'm happy to call you and follow up on that.
Okay.
And now Ron.
Hi, I'm Ron Labatich, 919 Menorah, Los Altos. I'm here representing myself, but I have work with Mr. Morris. It's obvious what's happened in the retail market. It just, I mean, everybody knows it. So, you know, why beat the dead horse? To me, it just, this whole thing kind of just makes common sense to approve. It's a good tenant. It's a long-term tenant. And they have people that work in that office that make a lot of money. And they spend money in Los Altos. So I would, I would urge you to approve this. Thank you.
All right. I have no more requests to speak. So I'm going to close the public hearing and we can consider. Mike, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll start. So I had a, I noticed in the conditions, the first thing is about the, number one, the business shall be conducted completely within the enclosed structure except for parking, loading spaces, outdoor eating areas and otherwise allowed, blah, blah, blah. But the outdoor eating areas, if it's not included, why are we mentioning it?
We mentioned it in case they had some opportunity to provide outdoor eating for employees or something there.
No, and the other thing I thought about was maybe making that a public eating area so that people could have, take lunches and, and sit there. But I think that's private land, so I don't think we can request that. But Mr. Morris may want to think about providing benches or some decorative things so that people could congregate there, especially a Safeway down the street. The rest of it, I, I'm pretty much agreeable to it. I don't see any reason not to. I know retail is taking a big hit throughout the town and throughout the country. And we need to fill space. And so this provides more feet on the street and provides more economic activity. I think it's a good idea.
So I'm, I'm on the fence about this. I'm really interested to hear what others have to say. On one hand, I totally agree. In order for retail to survive, it needs to be condensed and consolidated into probably and contracted to an even smaller location within our downtown. This was 2009. And I, I think the concept of a continuous retail experience where you come up on Main Street and be able to go right and left on First is, was a, was the pedestrian experience that we want to create, but it, it hasn't been thriving. So we need to create or envision a new area. I just can't imagine, though, that this wouldn't be in whatever new area. We, even if we contracted it, unless we eliminated it entirely on one side of First Street, which is, in my mind, what we should do should be like a comprehensive, it shouldn't be a one-off. This small space in the center of this building, because it hasn't been rented, gets to be office. It's like, let's just let that whole street go. That's what we're going to do. Because the next person, otherwise it's not fair. The next person that comes and has the same predicament, why wouldn't they get that same benefit? At the same time, maybe, if a solution, and it might be to just cut this part off and focus instead on the, like, H in the core, then all, all of this can go the way of, of office. But if we were to do that, I would really like to see a real public benefit other than vitality in the town. And so in throwing out some ideas, I think one of them would be, you know, when you look at this 2009, we talk about, they identify in these red dots what they are, the buildings that are the downtown gateway. This is one of the six. The gas station on the other side is the other one. So if we really want to have a nice entry gateway, then we should have city identify signing, which is what's listed under these buildings. We approved it with that. And every time I pass, I think, I see this tiny little postcard sign that says Los Altos. And there's this blank spot that in my mind would be perfect for, perfect signage, big, bold signage when people walk in. So even if there's an agreement to have waived that, this would be a public benefit to put that agreement aside and give the city what it originally approved. And then the second thing I can think of is, there was a lot of talk about parking in this building. So retail, 3100 square feet would have to park five. That would be 15.5 spots that they would, they, that they got approved for. And at the 3.33, that is office, they only need 10.3 spots. That's five spots that they no longer need if they're not going to be utilizing retail. And there's in fact, like seven spots just to, when you drive right in, that are right there that could be designated as public parking. And that would also have a real value. We talk about, you know, all the shortages at all the other spots in downtown when people are talking about development and we are holding them to feet to the fire. Well, here's a way of creating some parking, which would be again, another public benefit. So we'd be actually be getting something sort of tangible for what we're giving as the code is written. Alternatively, change the code so that he's not having to seek a variance. But I suspect that that's not going to happen until the visioning plays itself out. But this is a 12-year lease with a 10-year option. So 22 years is what you can imagine is gonna, we're never going to see this again as not office. And what's to, you know, keep, at some point Pharmica may not continue to pay, you know, they're on the hook, but they may not always do that. And after, after that point, then what's to keep that whole area from expanding? So I'm on the fence.
Bye.
I'm generally in agreement with this proposal, just because I think something is better than nothing. And if we've given it three years and some of the best times economically in, in the Bay Area and it hasn't rented, then we shouldn't pause any longer. And from my understanding, there's still another 75% of square footage left for.
Fifty percent, because a quarter is, is a restaurant.
Right. Okay. So another 50%. And so there's still hope that those could become retail and we still get to look at it if it, you know, if an office comes to, you know, to rent it and we get to choose, I assume. So I, I wouldn't want to miss this opportunity given it's a great cause, a, you know, good business and it's going to put foot, uh, traffic on the ground. So generally supportive.
Alex?
So I was not supportive of this.
You turn your hand.
Thanks. So I was not supportive of this interpretation the first time around. I actually covered the city council meeting where this was discussed. And it seemed like city council was supportive of us relooking at this, which is why we're looking at it today. And, you know, I think everyone felt that, you know, we've got to go through the downtown visioning process. But they couldn't imagine a scenario where this isn't addressed in terms of, you know, other uses on the ground floor. And so, you know, and my issue really with, with it is just, you know, slippery slope and how long is, is not displacement and all these things. And so I would encourage any other retailers that are out there that haven't been able to lease their spaces to come forward because it seems like city council is supportive of the idea and we don't necessarily have to wait all the way. I mean, people shouldn't be suffering while we go through this prolonged process. So to the extent that people have other uses, I think they should be bringing them forward because this shouldn't be, you know, a one-off thing. People, everyone should be treated fairly. And so that being said, I mean, I think that there is a, you know, a benefit to the developer to be able to get this ahead of, you know, the visioning process and everything else and changing of the code. And I may really like your idea of trying to get additional parking for downtown, which is a real problem, or at least perceived problem. And I'd be, you know, supportive of encouraging to try to get those additional parking spaces being made public.
Okay. Anita?
Well, unlike Renee, I'm kind of on the fence a little bit about this. Let me start with parking. I went back to try and look at the original approval for this and the original staff report and figure out how the parking was determined. And it's not in there. It just says that the parking was determined to be adequate at 125 and there was 123 would have been required. And it's not explained at all. And 125 spaces for 31,000 square foot building works out to more or less four per thousand, not five per thousand. So, but again, that's taking into account Grosso modo with what the restaurant and any other use and so on, so on. So I think we might be deluding ourselves into thinking that there would potentially be much of excess parking if we were to say yes on this. But I think that's not, for me, the big issue. For me, the big issue is, do we do a one-off? And when we considered this the last time, very clearly in my mind, what we did was we chose among the list of conditional uses that were otherwise allowed in this zone as to what we would say was okay here, if we granted the exception that Alex already described. And I went back, looked at the general plan. I looked at the rest of the zoning. And very clearly, in our zoning and in our general plan, the intention is not to have office on the first floor. And so where I finally come down, I think when, when all is said and done is, do we want to violate that? And if so, why do we want to violate that in a one-off situation? Is the story compelling because the business space has been vacant? Do we want to do a trade-off? And I have grave reservations, even though it's very appealing to want to have something in that corner that Renee described because I view that as a huge lost opportunity for the reasons that you cited when the, in the reasons that you cited, when the, in the design guidelines where it indicates our five entrances to town, and I think we've developed most of them, and I think we've kind of botched them all. I don't think we've really done a wonderful job at making wonderful entrances in any of those places. So, you know, then do we trade off? Okay, maybe we can make this one a little better for doing that. And I just, at the end of the day, finally concluded that, no. If we're going to do this, we have to make our zoning code meet something. And if we don't have it right, then we ought to fix the zoning code. But to continue to give exceptions, and I do not regret at all the idea of taking the avenue that we took the last time and saying, you know, we're going to not require this to be retail because, and we selected from among the conditional uses and said, we think these are still okay. And then to deviate from that to something that our general plan and our zoning code clearly says a CRS district does not have office on the first floor, to me, it's like, no, we don't do that. And I was at the council meeting that Alex mentioned, and it was Councilwoman Mordot who said very clearly, we need to look at this. And we do need to look at this. We need to look at what Ronit was saying, is compressing retail. And where and how do we want that to work? And how does that fit with this idea of the pedestrian experience and so on? And it's hard work. There's no question, I mean, dear God, what we've gone through in the last year, even the nine months I've been here, with respect to the CT and Subbonus and all, it's hard work to get zoning right, but that's our job. And I've, on the one hand, I feel really horrible for a developer who's done something and still has a piece of vacant property. Well, shame on us, but doggone it, we need to get our job done. And whether it's us, or city council, or staff, or whatever, to me, our zoning code has to mean something, or it means nothing. So, that's where I am.
Okay. Oh, it's so fun to go last. So, I understand, we went through this with a great deal of energy in August, in a meeting that it took an extraordinary length of time, but which people had assumed was going to be a very short item, and in fact, it bumped major items to another meeting because it took so long. I think the issue, it still comes down to something that we've dealt with many times here, which is, if the zoning is wrong, if the zoning is not working, we know the process to change zoning is very, very time-consuming. And do we, are we granting special privilege if we say to an applicant, you're caught between a rock and a hard place? And we can either use you as an example of, sorry, we're going to hold your feet to the fire, or are we going to say, you're caught between a rock and a hard place, we're going to change this, but we're two years out before the change comes. You've already been five years in the hole. I think that's long enough. We don't have to be cruel. So, I can support this. And as to the excess parking, I'm uncomfortable with that, because even though there's 22 years potential of leasing, I hate to give a parking, we've made a real effort to make sure that first-floor spaces are very tall ceilings, because once you make them low ceilings, they can't be anything else but one use. This has multiple uses. And I don't see the retail market roaring back. I think the economic approach to retail is totally different, and I don't feel we're going to see it come back. So, relative to giving up spaces to the public parking, I'm not comfortable with that at all. It feels a little like blackmail to me. The signage on the curved wall, I would really be interested to see what the horse treating was that went on that, because the identification for the building is appropriately on the main public seating and fountain area where people will be coming in the pedestrian experience. This is more of a high, higher speed, not pedestrian traffic car moving. And for that, I'd look to see signage that identified the town as you drove in. It's a different feeling. So, that one, if Jeff has an agreement and he's been, he paid for it as an agreement, perhaps city council can address that as they pay him back, whatever that money was. But I feel that the city signage on that curved wall would be very important. There's an issue that I'd like to bring up, and the reason I can support this property being occupied as much as we can is I can see that if the tenant that is withdrawing and going to pay their lease for the next eight years is going to be a vacant space, I think it was very good that Matty McBurney was here tonight, because I think we had at one point, when we were having a tremendous number of open spaces, retail spaces on State and Main, the, I think it was the lava arranged to have displays, so it didn't look like Cleveland. And I think it might be useful to think, when city council does, well, actually, never goes to city council, if we improve this, that I think it would be useful to have a plan from Mr. Morris as to what he wants that space to look like when it's empty. Yes, but I mean, it's going to be empty. And the question is, if we, are we putting a one-off, or are we saying that we're basically telling the visioning committee, the visioning process, that from our perspective, having retail there is no good? And so, what do we want there? And I go back to our basic discussion in August. I have no problem with there being an office there. It's people, it's, depending on what they do, relatively attractive to see bodies there in the window. I find that better than an empty restaurant table as I walk by in the daytime when they're not open. So, I can support this as a conditional use. And when I say that, that this is an administrative office and that is the use for this property, and if the use changes, or attempts to change, it has to come back for modification to the conditional use permit, as opposed to running with the property. So, from the perspective of the applicant, I believe that we have a lot of on-the-fence things. I don't know if we can actually, first of all, we're six, always a good thing. So...
I have one comment I just want to make, because I was here during the 400 Main Street conversation that went on, and that area, the signage, was something, they initially proposed making it a 400 Main Street sign, and we said no.
We rejected that.
And we specifically said, we want Los Altos signage there. So, if there was some other deal that happened...
I'm surprised I didn't come back to it.
I'm really surprised, and it's really irritating to hear that something happened from a staff perspective that didn't include the transportation, or the planning commission, because we were the ones that were really adamant about the whole thing.
It was definitely an issue of contention.
Well, for just the reason that Anita pointed out, that this is the entrance to the town.
Exactly.
Phoebe, can you explain?
Anyway, John, I'm glad you're here.
Can you explain more why you wouldn't want to recapture some parking for the public? Five, the five spot, if they, if they were required to do five extra spots of retail, and they're not going to need it, even for the length of the lease, they make those public?
Well, the question is, first of all, is the number accurate at five? And I don't know, because...
Well, it's office on the top.
Right, office on the top, and then that's a different 3.3 calculation, and bottom is a five calculation. If staff tells us it was parked at five, parked five.
Well, Steph doesn't tell us that. Steph, that's what the report said, that it is adequately parked.
But all you have to do is look. There's no, it's...
Wait, how many square feet are on the top?
Parking at Altos hours of the day.
Right, and then divide it, and then take how many square feet on the bottom, and that was all retail, and divide that, and you got the number.
I mean, if I go further and say that our, when we did, when we had this parking subcommittee, and we were suggesting that in a downtown area, you would have even more generous or less restrictive parking requirements. So, 3.3 is maybe what you'd do if a park, if a office was on a little island and there was nothing. But when you have an office and the people are then using the, you don't quite need as much parking for each location, right? So, if we just, I mean, you can just evaluate the parking.
I'm getting a little nervous and concerned about the potential for conditioning this particular use permit on having the applicant provide additional onsite public parking, simply because you're looking at a use permit for an office use that requires a certain amount of parking per our code. And I'm worried that there isn't quite a nexus between this impact that this particular project is creating and the condition that you're trying to address it.
I guess what I would say is, they're asking for a variance. What's the public benefit?
No, 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 they're not asking for a variance. They're asking for a use permit, a conditional use permit, which we have already discussed and approved as a concept, that it doesn't have to be retail. The fine point here is whether the use that they're proposing is under the acceptable uses to us. It's not necessarily an exception. It was always a conditional use.
Last time, we talked about whether we should add office, and we said no. So, this time, they're asking for...
We said not as a use by right. What we're seeing is if you, we said if you want to come back...
Some of us said no. So, this is an exception to a conditional use permit. So, what is the public benefit that we're getting? I think, when you get past...
No, it's not an exception. I mean, if you want to go down that path, I'd really want to check with our city attorney to make sure that our nexus between the condition and the project you're considering is appropriate.
I mean, for me, it feels like blackmail. It always feels like blackmail to me.
It sounds more like a discussion, get into about it over a development agreement.
If anything, I'd like to see how we can make that experience, a pedestrian experience, right? Which is why I was thinking about having someplace to sit outside, trying to make it a more congregating spot, because what the issue is in that whole spot is there's nobody walking by it, because there's nothing there that's of interest.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that having seating there will actually do that, though I appreciate the thinking behind it. So, I'm looking at the building as a whole. We have a restaurant in one corner, we have an empty space that used to be retail on the far end, and then we have what's left over.
Essentially, half the building on the bottom floor is the restaurant, and the other half is empty.
Yeah, and so...
With a fountain in between.
And even the restaurant isn't using the outdoor seating.
Exactly.
Tells you something. So, it's not, I mean, it's tough to have as...
It may not be outdoor seating, I'm just trying to, how do we make, you know, what can be done to help make that area more attractive? Because that's some of the issues. And putting an office there, to me, at least you have people...
I mean, I don't, I don't find it unattractive. I mean, I think they did a good job with the building. With that said, I want to get back to the point in hand, which is, is having an office in that space acceptable to the commission, irrespective of what other things we're talking about? I hear, what Steph is saying is there's an uncomfortable feeling from the staff's point of view about seeking to condition this relative to giving up their parking. Let's not go there. I think it would be important, perhaps, to think about what this empty space that's left will look like for the next X years. I'm sure that Mr. Morris is going to keep attempting to rent it out, but unlike this space, it was retail, which means it doesn't have the option that this particular space has. So, it's an apple or an orange. And that one's going to be difficult. We already know it's difficult, because they have a tenant who's failed.
So, are you saying that if they come before us with a similar request for office?
They can't, because this is a different, it's a different cow. This one was retail and there's something...
What would they have to, I mean, would that be that...
That would be a code change. That would be a variance.
Why?
Because it has already been retail, and you cannot replace retail.
But there's no, there's no definition for replacement of retail.
We haven't made that up.
If you replace retail with an office use, there is a definition. That's not permitted.
Displacement is not, I mean, if something's vacant for a year, the same argument can be made, that it's not displacement.
But it was occupied, and that was the hook on which staff hung this particular use.
Right, well, but it has never been brought up since either us or council to say, our next interpretation is, it's been vacant for a year and it's not displacing retail.
There are some parts of our code that do say that, that if it hasn't, if there's a use that's not permitted, and it's grandfathered in, and it's not used in that same manner for a year, I think it reverts to its underlying permitted use. There's something weird.
And we don't really solve the problem of helping people, because we're helping one person, right? That means everybody else doesn't get this same benefit.
Well, this gets to a point that you have said many times over, and you're totally right. If we're going to do a code change, we need to look at it globally. They're looking at it globally. The visioning process is going on. It's moving like a herd of turtles, and will continue to do so until it reaches some fruition. But I think that to hold this particular, in my opinion, to hold this particular applicant hostage until their process is finished is cruel and unusual punishment.
But why is it okay to hold the other 27 vacant people in our town hostage by this?
This is three years vacant.
But everybody's, this space never, never had retail in it all.
That's the hook.
That's, that's the difference. Everybody else has had retail in that spot that's now vacant.
And, but, so, the, so someone had a building, and they haven't had a tenant in there for three years, right? But they've owned the building for 20 years, right?
And they've had retail up until that point?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same economic loss to that person to not have been able to lease that building for those three years than it is to someone who just built a brand-new building and can't lease their building for three years. Three years is three years.
You're making really good points, but you're getting a little off-topic, off the agenda item, which is the use permit. And we can bring, bring back another discussion, maybe even another application for you to consider, where you have example of what you've just talked about, but...
But when I was reading the staff report...
I don't want you to get so far afield that you're talking about policy changes and ordinance changes when that's not...
Which are not agendized.
Right, but I'm just, I'm commenting on the staff report that says, use notes that these users are allowed with the use permit approval, except when they displace a retail business. When Alex is saying as well, just because it's never had any retail in it, understand that option, but what happens if somebody has a space? I mean, because it's the same argument.
That was Alex's argument in August, and he was outvoted.
Okay.
I'd just like to point that.
Sorry, Alex. But no, I'm just saying, that's what we're kind of...
I did lead with that.
They did, we were completely straightforward.
And it's something that, you know, that's why we have an economist as part of the downtown vision team, and, you know, why he has made certain recommendations. And at the meeting that Commissioner Sinek was at, he, you know, heard the council discussion. I think there's some, the same frustration at their level about, you know, these rules in place for businesses, and we have changing times with the retail world and other world...
They can change the rules.
Yeah.
But it takes time. So, to get to the agenda item in hand, can I have a motion either for approval or not approval from somebody? I'll move that we reject this conditional use permit. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion?
I think we have to get our zoning right.
I agree.
And I do believe that city council can actually change things quickly. Just as they changed the height on this street in one evening from 45 feet to 30 feet, they can make these changes very quickly. And if that is, if we continue to have the wrong zoning in this area, the fastest way to improve it is not to do these special privilege fixes. It's just to fast-track this issue.
Other?
I agree and would add to that. I think that the idea of trying to get public benefits in exchange for fast-tracking makes a further, is a further abomination to the notion of the rule of law and what our zoning code stands for.
That one I have agreement with.
The one thing I can say is that every time we've approved something that's been controversial, city council reacts to it in some way, right? Whether it's the elevator tower or, but I'm just thinking that in some ways, maybe, maybe approving this causes it to cause other things to happen.
Actually, if we reject it, it could be appealed to the city council, and then maybe they would weigh in.
They're the better body.
And decide what to do.
So, we have a motion that it's seconded. Can I have a vote, please, all in favor of the motion to deny application? Say aye.
Aye.
Maybe you better raise hands.
No, I mean, I think, again, like, I originally was against, I'm just, I'm torn, because I don't know what to do as a commissioner, because I don't agree with this. It went to city council, they said that they wanted it, you know, passed. I would, I guess, say, I still don't agree with it. They want to pass it, they can pass it.
But they didn't approve an office use on the first floor, Alex.
Just a minute, did you vote? Did you vote for this, for this motion? You did.
Yes.
And you voted for this motion.
And so, they wouldn't have sent it back had they not... had they not approved office on it.
So you're voting for this, to this motion to deny or not? Because I'm going to ask the people who are going to say nay, or are you going to?
I am going to vote that we should reject.
Okay, so we have three, and all opposed two. All right, so we have a tie. What happens, gentlemen?
That, that motion fails.
That's what I thought.
And so you need, you can make another motion.
So if we make a motion the other way, it's going to be 3-3, and it's going to fail.
Then we would have a technical denial of the use permit application, subject to appeal to council.
Okay.
Unless someone changes.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So I'll make a motion to approve the use permit for this 400 Main Street.
Okay, further discussion?
You need a second.
Oh, second? Okay, five seconds, all right, discussion? My discussion point is if you're waffling, I sure wish you'd waffled either way because it would be very good to get resolution tonight because I think that regardless of what happens, if it's denied, it's going to go to city council on appeal. If it's approved, it doesn't go to city council, but I think it will have the same effect because I'm sure Lynette will point out to the rest of city council that this was a tough one, and we're really focused on what's going to happen on that part of the CRS zone, since she's our rep.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I was going to say, I was here at that meeting. They were having this entire discussion about our discussion. I sat right next to the microphone. They talked about getting me up there to answer these questions, and I was never called up to answer these questions. So I, that is part of my hesitancy. I will say that, I mean, we can see what happens to, I mean, I'm a developer. We can see what happens to projects. And I think the First Street Green is a great example when, like, we can't do anything. And so I guess part, as, I'm still, one of the things that I would ask is, can you please explain to us the timing of, if it were to, you know, be denied?
Who are you addressing, John?
To John. If it were to be denied, when would it go to council? And, and appealed, when would it go to council? What does the timing look like? And what are we talking about in terms of?
I understand that the council is, their, their November calendar is really busy. So maybe the first meeting in December is when we can get an appeal before them.
I have to call a vote.
I, I would say, discussion, if we're still talking. I think this matter should rise to the level of city council. And we make this decision for them, then they're off the hook in changing essentially the CRS zone on this, on this strip for even longer. So if they want, if, if we want to send a message about the urgency of this change, this, then they need to, they need to be the ones doing it.
I just don't feel like this guy needs to be the scapegoat for that.
But if it's eventually going to happen, which we all know it will, why should we, you know, waste our time and money?
And, and I would say it's because the specific issue of office on the first floor. And I sat in that same meeting and watched Alex sit over in that chair waiting to be called on and never called on, which was really interesting. But the issue of office on first floor never came up. And this would put it square in council's lap to say, you've got to confront this.
Right.
I disagree that, that, it, it did come up because they knew that they had this lease. That was part of the whole discussion, was.
It's in the wings.
Did you guys present office to city council? I mean, to planning commission? So I think they knew it was office when they sent it back.
Look, I, I think it won't be the first time city council agrees with us.
I don't think that they're going to lose a lease in, in a month. So for me, again, just because I had the initial problem with the interpretation, and I don't think that we should be doing these things when off, then I feel like it should go back to the city council, and they should make their decision.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair, I have one other option. I don't know if you want to hear it before or after you have a vote.
Yes, well, why don't you tell us the option now?
Well, the other option is to continue the item to your next meeting, and where you'd have seven, planning and transportation commissioners present.
But one of us may be missing then, too.
That's true.
That's a possibility.
That's very true.
Well.
I'd like to call a question?
Yes.
That means you have to vote out.
Okay, well, all in favor of the current to approve the application for this conditional use? Raise hands, okay? And so we are tied again.
No, you have to say the other way around.
And all opposed?
End up standing.
And no abstentions. So we have three, four, and three against. So we have a technical failure.
Motion failed.
I don't think it, we could hold it for seven because I agree that it's rare for us to have all seven at this point, and we're heading into holiday season. So the applicant has 10 days to appeal?
Yep.
Fifteen.
Fifteen days to appeal, thank you. Do you, I, as a courtesy to the applicant, I would suggest that you ask him if he would like to have you, to continue.
Oh, okay.
For a seventh member, or just take the technical denial onto council.
So how does that plan work?
The next PTC meeting is November the 2nd.
And do we have time on our calendar?
You do.
And does anyone have a commitment out of the city on the 2nd of November?
Let me check.
And then when would the next city council meeting be on the 2nd?
Well, you'd be, if you were to appeal it, you'd be looking at December sometime.
November 2nd, we'll agree then.
I have a conflict. I won't be there.
Okay, so we're going to be down one person at the next PTC meeting anyway.
But Sally will be back.
Sally will be back, but we have, oh, well, we may get a different.
So do you allow, I mean, is that how it works? Applicant gets to choose their.
We often, we often, we often have a courtesy where we ask, in previous situations, we have asked if they would prefer a denial in order to go immediately to appeal.
I can never remember that happening.
It happened in my tenure. It happened on the design review committee several times.
You've been around for a long.
I've been around for dog's age.
Not sure, it's a good precedent.
So at this moment, we have a technical denial of the application.
And the applicant has at least requested that you continue it to have a, other commissioner present.
Do we need to vote on the continuance?
I don't know, I'm not sure, just a six-person voting, so.
That's what you're going to have because we have one person who said they're already going to be gone.
It's going to be a different six people, is what we were talking about.
Well, it's whether Sally's for or against it, right? Because.
No, it's just one person deciding.
It's one person deciding.
She would vote, but you would, could have a potential.
No, but I think it makes more sense not to put it all on one person, which is Sally. I think if, if the.
Right.
Yeah, let's put it on all five of the council members.
If the, if the argument that was made, and the reason this motion has failed is because we feel it's above our pay level, that we want to have city council look at the issue of offices on the first floor in the CRS zoning, then we should leave it as it stands, and the applicant should appeal as soon as possible to get on the city council calendar. And if city council wants a member of PTC who will be at that meeting to speak.
Be there and then not speak.
Yes, well, that seems to be the general pattern. But in fact, if they could, we will be there. So that's the way I think we will leave it.
And I think what I would say is that because it's setting a precedent, we'd like to have the city council decide this matter because it's not really above our pay grade. It's just that it's, it's such a huge issue of.
Well, it's, it's integral to the discussion of what's happening to the retail market in town, and how our zoning needs to reflect what's going on. And if it's integral to that, then we can make suggestions. And in fact, we are making a suggestion that there's an issue on Main Street, I mean, on First Street, and they need to deal with it.
And I would suggest they also have the attorney explore whether we can.
Blackmail someone into getting parking spaces?
And maybe, like, your, your interpretation is.
Different than yours. Actually, the thing I think.
I'd like to hear what an attorney says.
I really would like to hear staff also.
You get attorney opinions on a lot of staff.
Yeah, I'd like staff to explore their records relative to the signage on the seat wall.
Absolutely.
Well, I was going to say that it's really for the, for the commissioner, or potential future agenda items, I think that should be a future agenda item.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that in a moment. So at this moment, the application is denied.
Technical denial.
And the next item is preparation for our annual joint meeting with city council. What an opportunity. So David, you've prepared this wonderful document, and we have some things to add to it, clearly.
Yes, I was, I was going to, going to say that with our upcoming meeting with council on November 7th, it's your opportunity to discuss your work plan. And there might be some, some keen topics to raise to them. You know, just, just for the record, noting that we are, the council did reform the commission, which will be effective next, next month in terms of planning commission focusing solely on planning items, except as council might, you know, refer to us. And so I revised your, your work plan accordingly to, to go back to our normal legislative duties that include reviewing the capital improvement plan, housing elements, development review, and in our project tours, if we want to do that.
So are the transportation issues for developer review going to be in the new commission, or the old BPAC?
Well, I think we still have to sort out some of those procedural issues in terms of what the complete streets commission's role is in terms of reviewing traffic reports and so forth that then this body would then receive with the development review. I think that may also be a good topic for us to discuss with council.
Before we discuss with council, I have a couple comments on, on your summary, David. And I, I have only been here nine months, so I might be missing something here. But our numbers under development review, number seven and number 16 both deal with 517 Tyndall Street. And I wondered if that ought to kind of all get wrapped up into one thing?
We could, I mean, there are two separate items. One was a study session, and.
I realize that. I just, I just was reading it, and I went, wait, wait, we already talked about 517. Another would be on number nine. I believe the study session having to do with Lacey was exclusively restricted to the plaza discussion, was not a discussion of 100 to 151. It was only about the plaza.
We talked about the height, yeah. Two stories versus three stories, and setbacks, and.
And whether the public benefit for having it be a higher height would be warranted. It was a really.
What we were told was on the agenda, was the plaza. What we talked about was something else. But I believe what we were told was that it was supposed to be the.
Yeah, that was the whole purpose of it.
Fly through.
But I'm.
And I didn't think the park was a part of what we talked about. In fact, I thought it flipped the other way. We said we wouldn't talk about the park because it's a public space.
It wasn't a public benefit. They had to provide the public benefit on their property.
Right.
Okay, as I said, my recollections can be screwed up, so thank you. But I am confident that on number 15, you mean that to be 4880 and not 4800.
Are we in the discussion part of this now?
I guess we are because the staff report is.
Well, because what I would like to do is focus, not necessarily on what we've done in the past, but really what we want to do in the future. And I think a good example of that is the fact that the planning commission, as we will be known, comes to these city council meetings. And I don't have not, I've only seen one case where we, I was, I was called, and I think that it's rare. And it was because they wanted some clarification. But I think that that's something, if we're there, and Alex is sitting at the desk, and they don't talk or ask questions, I, I don't know what the point of us coming to the meetings are.
It's, it's as much to, to discuss with council their, their questions, but it's also to report back to this body, the council's actions, so.
But we can do that remotely.
Right, or now Chris Jordan sends it out after every meeting anyway.
And it's, it's been frustrating to me when I'm sitting there, because I go to all the council meetings anyway because I'm crazy. And to hear them debate things, and I know what the answer is as to why we did what we did. And I'm in no position to, to say, I can tell you why we did that. And I don't have a way to signal them, to tell them that there has anything, you know, because our minutes don't explain anything. They say we took this action.
It's an action minute, and that's it.
I think on the, one of our items.
So they hash through stuff that's, you know, like, we hashed through all that stuff, and.
So part of, what I was going to say is what we'd like to talk about is the interaction between the planning commission and city council, during city council meetings.
And of course.
And I think vice versa, because we have.
Agree.
City council here. We want to interact with these meetings. And you can try to call me out, but I don't think anyone else.
I did, you know, I was just not given the opportunity.
Correct.
So do we let her just come to the mic? I don't know. I mean, is there a public comment portion?
Yes, you can accept public comment.
Would you like to say something? You have to, because you're on television.
I know, I definitely want them to hear from you, and I think it's important for them to hear from you. But sometimes they just feel that they... Some council members just feel that they already have their mindset and that hearing from PTC would not sway them. But I truly feel that it's important, like I said, we wanted to hear from Alex and I thought it would be valuable for them to hear from Alex. But unfortunately, he just was not given the opportunity because the two council members just went on and on and after they went on and on, it...
It kept going on and on.
Yeah.
I wonder if it makes...
Was decided that they're not going to hear from you and whatever you had to say wasn't going to matter. So I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lynette.
I don't mean this in any way to speak negatively of staff because they do a superb job presenting at the beginning on any item. But I kind of wonder if we stuck whoever the planning commission rep is for that at the table with you guys, just like how you share back and forth about who's going to answer if there's a question from, there's a period of questions from staff. And then when they get into the discussion, they sometimes still ask you more questions. You would be, you know, you could turn to one of us and just go, you know, why don't you talk to me to take that one?
Well, I actually think that's not a bad idea. In fact, I was going to bring up when Commissioner McTeague was speaking. In other agencies I've worked in, you've had a designated planning commission representative at council meetings to present and speak for the commission as a whole. Sometimes it's been the chair of the planning commission, other times it's been, you know, Commissioner XYZ. You've been the most vocal about this particular project and have the most expertise on it. Can you go to the city council and after staff presentation, you kind of become a second presentation to council in terms of what you deliberated, what you discussed, how the commission came up with the recommendation or the action that it did, and then be there to answer questions. That's certainly you can bring up with the council to ask them if they would be interested in having that kind of interaction.
I mean, that's a more formalized way. Up until the current city council, the presence of the planning commissioner was always sufficient in the sense that there was a resource and city council members chose to use it. It's only in the current city council that has not been happening, and that's a political decision.
But maybe having us sit at the table would help.
Be a nice try, but I wouldn't hold my breath.
Sounds like it'd be a good thing to discuss with them.
Certainly.
Right.
And the other thing is, a topic for the agenda will be when, I don't know quite how to phrase this, but if we're having a discussion where we are either adamantly for, together united, or adamantly against, together united, or split in some real way, how we can convey those points to city council relative to modifications to the zoning code particularly, where we are, we're not initiating per se, but we're saying, we perceive a problem. We're seeing it at the level, if you come to you on appeal, you're going to see lots of them. We feel as planners, we need to let you know that we have some real concerns. And here are some of the things we've done. And in particular, this thing, these, this CRS office on the first floor, when it's definitely not in our general plan, when we have specifically excluded it all along. But we're based on zoning that even if it was modified in the year 2000, we're 17 years later. And the idea of continuous retail and the percentage of retail relative to office in our town is out of whack by the economic projection standards. There needs to be an address for that. And what's the timeline for the downtown visioning?
Right. Because but for the downtown visioning, we could agenda...
Do you want to turn your mic on?
We could agendize first street changes to...
Oh, we can't.
But, and we could change it. I mean, this commission could make a recommendation to change it and it would go to them in a much hastier way. But because of this downtown visioning, we're not able to do anything, make any recommendations in this downtown area.
And part of that is the balance that's reflected in the general plan. There's a discussion about the tax base and the influence of having retail versus services versus office. And that's one of the reasons why there isn't an economist working on visioning. And are we in a position to recommend those kinds of changes absent having that information about the impact on the tax base of recommending certain changes to our zoning code? And I'm not sure that we do. I certainly don't know what we'd use for a resource.
No tax being generated by vacant retail.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And that's, yes, that goes without saying.
So back to the topic, which is what are we going to talk to the city council about?
Timing of visioning, yes.
Downtown visioning, timing.
Yeah.
And I reps at the meeting as a resource for council to understand the thinking behind our recommendations or our votes when applicable.
Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, I'm a little frustrated with the whole Loyola experience where we all said yes, and then, by the way, you should talk to Mike about the traffic stuff. And then staff says, well, we don't approve of having a light there. Like, that was the conversation.
The whole Loyola Corners would make a wonderful case study for how not to proceed in a number of areas.
But anyway, but...
But I think, and that's maybe part of what we should talk about too, is how do we avoid the ping pong stuff that seems to be happening? Or what seems to be either churning or even wasted time because we're going down this road and it turns out council's priority is over there, and here we are.
That one, if you can solve that one, I'd be really happy.
Well, you know, I was a management consultant, and so I'm obsessed with those kinds of problems.
I mean, throughout my tenure on this commission, that's been the thing is the representative goes to the city council meeting and watches the conversation, comes back at the next meeting and says, hey, by the way, we were thinking left, they went right, so we should think about going right.
Yeah, but sometimes it's kind of like too late. We've already had immense amount of staff time, immense amount of time, two or three sessions with us. And what I was thinking about is council at the end of the year, and I don't, John, you and David might be able to comment on how this works, or maybe Lynette does, although you haven't seen the end of a year because this is your first year on council. But they have these annual priorities. They have a big offsite and they, you know, they spend lots of energy on priorities. And I kind of wonder if we shouldn't have like a follow-up session after that that's either a study session with or discussion session with them and maybe with staff that says, okay, so if we're going to do these priorities, what pieces of this do we have? And kind of lay out when we think that'll fall in the calendar. And maybe there's elements to that they haven't thought of that we thought of. An example of that being with the CT zone and with the emphasis on affordable housing, we never discussed inclusionary zoning and increasing the requirements for inclusionary zoning because kind of like it never came up. And if we had known at the beginning of the year, this was going to be a big thing and affordable housing was going to be a big thing, we might have had the sense to say, gee, we probably ought to wrap the inclusional zoning piece in there as we go through. And instead, we didn't. And now we kind of have this cart before the horse mess.
Well, we also have the state which added the density bonus laws.
Yeah, but no, but they didn't, Phoebe. That was a situation, and that's a different problem of how do we keep up with the impact of state law changes on our zoning code? And to me, that's a big one that I think council should care about. I mean, they just passed 15 laws having to do with housing.
Yeah.
And I'm going to go to a conference in a couple of weeks and listen to an expert from California League of Cities talk about what the impact on that, on cities of what those all are. But how does our city attorney bring to council and to staff when there are really significant changes and what that does to our work plan?
Well, that would be an interesting topic, is the three items. If we have the representation at the city council meeting and the timing of the downtown visioning, perhaps the third thing is to talk about the effect of state law on our town proactively. As opposed to reactively, or maybe it's both because we don't have a lot of options for proactive sometimes.
But I'd also not like, I don't want to lose what Mike said.
Which time?
Which point?
About understanding council's priorities and direction and how we get that more on the front end.
But that's what I thought this meeting that we have with them, I mean, it's sort of their chance to give us feedback as to what things, I mean, I'd like to hear, you know, what things are we missing that they would wish we would have said this and that or whatever.
That's one time, it's once a year, right?
Yes.
It seems like that should be...
Actually, twice a year. Don't we get that twice a year?
No, we haven't had one for a year and a half, apparently.
So I would just say the frequency of when that happens, maybe...
It used to be April, but we pushed it, but they pushed it to November, phased it differently for all.
Well, I'd do one in the first part of February based on their work plan. Priorities, their priorities, and then one like halfway through the year on what's new and what have we done and where are we?
Well, I mean, if everybody from planning commission agrees that the heights in certain zones should go high and it goes to city council and city council says, no, they have to stay low, we're definitely at a disconnect, and that's happened to us more than once.
Well, I think I was the dissident vote there and the only one.
It was six one, all right.
Yeah.
But I think, I think to suggest that there's one priority at city council is not accurate.
No, but they have a whole list. What are their priority, they have like six, seven?
No, I mean that there's a unified priority.
Well, they claim there is.
Something that they want to do. I mean that they're united in their vision.
Oh, really?
So then if some of us agree with some of them, some of the time is my point. It's not like they could go in this direction and then we have to all follow. It's not quite clear the direction always.
So I have representative at the city council meeting, the timing for the downtown visioning. I have priority and directions that are perceived by city council and the frequency of our joint meeting, whether we can take the one in November.
Frequency and timing.
Frequency and timing, so that we can have a meeting appropriately in November and have a six-month what's going on, have things changed, do we need to revam?
Or in March and April after they've done their offsite and then have a meeting with them to say, what do you guys, you know, how do you want to change?
They usually do it at the end of January.
So those four issues will be things to talk about in the preparation for the joint meeting in November 7. Is that correct?
Correct.
Are we all in town again?
Downtown visioning, we can give you an update on that at your next meeting.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Anything else for this topic? If not, I'm going to go to the commissioners' reports and comments. Who has been to what city council meeting since we last met?
Aneeta and I were at the last one where they talked about the...
Mike, Mike.
Loyola Corners was the second topic. I'll let Aneeta talk about that. The first topic was about the childhood...
Oh, Hillview.
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 Children's Center.
Children's Center. And the room was as filled as I've ever seen it. And there were a lot of people who had kids in the program or taught at the program or lived in town that had affection for the program. There were, I would say, you could count on one hand, number of speakers against it. And then I think, I mean, you got the report from Jordan probably afterwards of the decision was made to consider trying to negotiate a further contribution. And it was, and I don't think a decision was made.
It's all complicated too by the council at their study session having expressed support for, because they can't legally decide something in a study session, but support for adding a number of things to the Hillview Center, which pushes the budget up by almost $10 million. And then having the finance chief from the city come back and go, rips. Rips, if you do that, you might affect what the capital improvement plan is. And so they kind of put a little bit of what they're doing with Hillview, which may or may not include what they're going to do with Children's Corner on hold until November when they get a better report of if they want to spend $10 million more on the civic center, what are they going to have to change?
So the thing about Children's Corner, which I brought up before, is that childcare centers have specific requirements for sizes of spaces, which none of the others do. The other ones are programmatic decisions.
They also have to be dedicated.
Has to be, for their license. If they don't have those spaces, you can't have it. So my point in the original discussion was to point out to city council that if they don't plan for it, they perforce are saying they're not going to have childcare at Hillview. And it wasn't to say that senior center was less valuable, it's that senior center does not have licensing requirements. And they could go into a space that was planned for childcare if childcare didn't happen.
I was at the task force meeting last night and the three scenarios is the way, the term they used, the three scenarios that the architectural firm presented all showed where they would put Children's Corner if council approved it, and it was all in a very more isolated and separated and dedicated space.
Okay, so that had to be...
So that issue, I think, the architects must be very aware of that.
Okay, then Loyola Corners.
Well, they passed it. They actually agreed to something. It's done. And I made sure when I got here tonight, I said to David, it's really done, right? We're really done. And then he reminded me that, yes, including one of the things that we discussed, which was the staff is now going to create a new document, a new and comprehensive document that reflects the other changes and amendments that have been made over the course of the last 20 years, plus the most recent ones, so that there is a single document. The most substantive parts of this, I believe, were that they changed how we measured the roof height. They left it to 30, but it went back to being measured the way we measure heights otherwise.
It wasn't to the absolute height, isn't it?
As recommended to the highest point.
To the highest point, okay. They finally ended up, they went around and around and around on that one. They added 20 housing units rather than square footage. And the rest was pretty much...
They required sloped roofs.
Sloped roofs.
The equipment within the 30 feet.
Right. And it was one of those things where I wanted to jump up, Phoebe, because there's like, they were wondering, what does this mean that the mechanical is supposed to be architecturally integrated? I just wanted to raise my head and go, that was Phoebe, you guys, just take it. Okay, just forget, just take it. You know, they didn't ask.
That's all right. They managed to pass it anyway with that language, which means the staff understands it. So when an applicant comes in, it will be transparent. Staff will say, we don't want to see it. It has to be inside the volume. If we see it, you're not going to pass. It's easy. That was the only meeting between our last one and this, so that's it. Who is our next commissioner representative?
I think that was the last meeting, wasn't it?
No, for the next city council meeting. Who is our next rep there? Mike is looking.
It's November, we're in October 24, is that the next meeting? That would be you, Phoebe.
That's what I thought.
And who's the one after that, Mike?
Bahi is on the 14th, and I follow up on the 28th, and Aneeta, you're on the 12th.
Okay, so we're up and coming. Okay, potential future agenda items.
What happened to report, commissioners and comments?
Commissioners reports and comments, we just had that.
Oh, I was going to give a report.
Oh, give a report on which?
On Loyola Corners.
Oh.
I reached out to the, I asked David, who do I talk to?
Oh, about the transportation?
About the transportation issue because I was really surprised that they said, that staff said there was no light that was approved. But I said, but we're not talking about a light being approved. We're talking about changing A Street to one-way and what do we do afterwards? And how does that work so that it can flow better? So I reached out to Suzanne to meet, and apparently there's a transportation manager that's now been hired. So just FYI. And so the three of us are going to meet at some point.
Great.
And because I stored her the slides that I had just to talk about it, so she would be aware of what was going on.
So if we're not a T anymore, who is this person? Who is the new transportation manager? Tell us something about her.
Or him.
Her? Well, I thought, I thought...
I don't know, Suzanne, it's a her.
It's a her. I am Arun, thank you. Trying to, last name is very distinctive. Arun, I think it's Bodda.
Okay.
And...
Where does she come from, from another municipality?
I don't know, but what we can do is we will email you.
That would be nice because sometimes, although we're not going to be T anymore, sometimes questions come up and it would be nice to have a point of reference.
Sure, especially with new projects.
Yeah. All right. Potential future agenda items.
The signage on 400 Main Street in the corner of Foothill and Main Street.
On the seat wall.
And what secret deal got done that none of us knew about.
I hope there wasn't a horse trade on that. I just hope there wasn't.
It was deferred and that's it.
Perhaps it's still in the deferred state and we can raise it from the grave.
I don't know. I just, when Jeff said he had worked out some deal, I was like, well, that's news to me.
Me too.
It sounded funny. It would have to be public, so we'll see what goes on. I have a question about if Farmica is gone and it's an empty space, what is it going to look like? Are we going to have brown paper on those windows?
It's on there now.
That's why I know, but are we going to have it on there?
Especially if they're paying for eight years.
Eight years?
Eight years. That needs to be addressed.
You could take the rent that they're paying and apply it towards some beauteous thing that we could be looking at, photographic exhibits.
If you make it beautiful, then a landlord wants to be able to show in order to change the code to allow office.
It should be as ugly as...
Is it even allowed, is it even allowed to have paper on windows?
It's supposed to have transparence. If you see on the CRS, CRS isn't supposed to be 80% transparent in the front windows?
I think it's 60, but it's a lot.
It's a lot. And speaking of that, about those bars on the Verizon building, Verizon store.
The bars.
We have a security grates. And I've been paying attention, almost all of the Verizon stores that I've seen. Apparently there was a movement that all the Verizon phone stores now at the end of day pull out these giant security grates behind their windows, which make you look like you're living in a ghetto. And so David and I have spoken about this. But about what is going to happen to the Farmica space, that is a real concern to me. And if it has to be 60% transparent, brown paper is not transparent.
Well, and I wonder if Jeff has talked to Lacey because they've, Lacey has a number of buildings that were empty and they put pop-up stores, you know, for a period of time, and maybe that's an option for Jeff to consider. It may not be ideal, but if he's already got the rent paid, maybe having some other entity in that space would help.
I wouldn't treat him again.
No special treatment?
No, I mean, we have, how many vacancies?
But this is a very large one.
I know, but they all have windows, so.
Yeah, I mean, 170 has had weird stuff.
Yeah. But Lacey at least has been aggressive about trying to fill that space with something.
So as a potential future agenda item, this is a problem in town. What do we want things to look like when they are vacant? Is there a policy that we should have? If it's supposed to be 60% transparent, is that not smart in a situation like this?
And does that only...
I don't know. Keep thinking about that.
Does it only apply to downtown or does it apply to all commercial, all of our commercial areas?
As a potential future agenda item, I think my request is it be... I don't know. As a potential future agenda item, I think my request is it be, shall, can we discuss this as a policy of what to do about vacancies visually relative to the town?
And I would like to address something that's come up a number of times, and that is the maintenance of landscape screening.
Screening.
Especially between commercial and residential areas.
Good point. Any other items for the potential future agenda?
I've brought it up a few times, the, just in terms of trying to be proactive, whether we, you know, we're basically subsidizing all of these residential units that are downtown, because we have parking that's not limited. And so we have on public streets.
Okay.
Right? So, on First, Second, Third, Fourth, all those, between State and Edith, and on Edith as well. Like, I drive through there all the time, and it's the same cars that are parked there twenty-four, seven. And so whether we try to do-
But they don't, do have to move after every three days.
Are you suggesting that we look at some kind of policy for-
I think there is already.
Neighborhood stickers?
I didn't mean they have to move every three days.
Parking meters? What are we talking about?
You can't park a car for more than three days. On the third day, it has to move.
Right. But we sit here, meeting after meeting, talking about how there's not enough parking in downtown, right? And we have these opportunities where we should be capturing parking for retail and everything else that's downtown that needs it. It seems unfair that-
So, do you wanna have the police department here to talk about what they're doing to enforce parking?
There's nothing to enforce, because, I mean, even third day, right? It should be daily parking, or for a few hours, or two hours, or three hours, just like it is everywhere else.
So as an agenda item, can we talk about street parking?
In the downtown core.
In the downtown core. And then we can have our discussion.
And then I have a question, speaking of parking. When is the parking committee and subsequent consultants' review and all that stuff coming back our direction?
Soon.
And for the parking conversation, wherever that happens, can we have the, somebody from the police department here to talk about, that would be, you know?
And can we do it when we're sure Lynette's gonna be here, so that she can participate? And I'd like, I'd like to invite her somehow to-
Lynette comes to every meeting.
Yeah. But I mean, make sure, because I don't think she's missed much, but-
You do.
I think she has missed one, but-
Yeah, she's been pretty good.
But she, she'd sit at the tables.
And, and there is also, though I have no idea if council will do anything with it, but there is a proposal being, that's on the agenda for next week, if anyone has looked at council's next week agenda, to take up potentially the inclusionary bonus, the inclusionary zoning code.
So I have one question.
Well, wait, before we, is there any other future, potential future agenda items that we've, we've given staff some that keeps them busy? Okay, next comment.
The Complete Streets Committee usually has a representative here, and since we're advocating for us to be at City Council meeting at the table, would be relevant to have them sit at the council? So if they had any comments to be made during the meeting, that they could chime in?
We could explore it. I was thinking that this would be a good topic for our joint meeting.
Okay. I just, because I know that the Complete Streets has somebody usually attending our meetings, it would be nice that, you know, we kinda work the same way that we envision.
Well, maybe the topic is, how can we best utilize all the resources in town so that the communication is direct?
Right.
And what can we do to do that?
Yeah. I mean, for example, if there's a building that's being discussed, I'd love to have somebody from the Arts Commission here. Because, like, we were talking about that round thing that was out in the front, we talked about it, but they essentially decided what they wanted to do, and-
And it never went to Arts Commission.
Actually, they gave us a few different options.
But we're the ones that decided.
This, that, or the other.
Yeah.
But then we, we said Arts Commission should look at this, and that apparently didn't happen.
So I don't know. I just, I just think there's, it would be nice to, how to interact with the different commissions where appropriate. They don't have to be at every meeting.
Just, I just wanna add one more thing, because the topic came up about all the recent housing bills. I know our city attorney's office, a member of their staff, is going through all the housing bills. We're hoping to have a joint meeting with the City Council and Planning and Transportation Commission for a representative from the city attorney's office to go over all the housing bills and their implications. So, I don't have a date yet or a time, but that's on the agenda at some point in the future.
So would that be a study session for the-
It'd be like a study session, yeah.
For the City Council.
Training session for everyone.
Anything else from staff? Meeting's adjourned.